Well, yeah, that weekend of the deadline was always a bit...
I missed the process. So, I started with positions.
Don't you guys have somebody in close to you that goes through all those green bills and says they're yours or they're someone else's? You were saying you had to go through your own...
Propositions.
Oh, obviously.
I have to go through all of them. I'm pretty sure I actually...
Oh, you don't know? Because somebody probably goes through all of them and says, "Okay, this is Adam's list."
They didn't know, though.
I mean, I don't know how to change... I mean, like, I often think they have somebody who does that. I assume you guys are bigger and you'd have somebody. But I don't know. Depends.
See, I don't know. Someone's a thousand.
Yeah, that's what I do. I think I'm totally...
I think they need us, us, us. So, we don't miss anything.
Yourself, so...
Yeah. The multifactor dedication and props this morning.
H something.
Phil Sami.
Okay, well, we're going to start now, and we have some preliminary items here that are going to take a few minutes. So, people who are still arriving late will still be here in plenty of time. So, good morning. My name is Alan Hirsch. I'm Chief Deputy Director of the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, and with me are Carol Monahan Cummings, our Chief Counsel, and Dr. Martha Sandy, who is Manager of our Proposition 65 program. Many of you in the audience and on the webcast, if you're a Prop 65 veteran, you may be interested in learning that this is the very first public event that we have held here in the George Alexeyev Environmental Health Library here in Oeha's Oakland office. This library has been here for the last 20 years, but we completed a major renovation of it this past spring. And so, it was natural to name it after George, who was a scientist and manager here at Oeha for many years and was our director from 2011 until just before his untimely passing in 2015. And it's a really appropriate first public event for this library because George thrived on dealing with just the kind of tricky technical issues that are the focus of this public hearing. And George excelled at breaking a complicated problem into its individual components and then putting it back together in some deviously clever way that addressed the problem at least for us and more often than not for our stakeholders, too. So, George would definitely feel right at home with the subject matter of today's hearing. So, I'm required to do some housekeeping items now. In the unlikely event of an emergency during the public hearing, you should go to either end of the corridor and walk down 16 flights of stairs to exit the building. Sorry about that. But for people on the webcast, we are on the 16th floor of a state office building here in downtown Oakland. And if for any reason you're not able to walk down the stairs, you should go into the stairwell and wait inside of the vestibule. And we have emergency response team members who will assist you in notifying building management that you require assistance in leaving the building. Fortunately, the bathrooms are a little easier to deal with. The men's and women's rooms are on the other side of the corridor, so you can go out the back to your left, and then you can turn right at an entry area to access either one. There's normally card key access, but that has been turned off. However, if you require any help, you can ask the receptionist at the main entrance to our office, which is just on the other side of the corridor. Also, today's hearing, as a reminder, is being webcast. If you want to alert a colleague about the webcast, they can access it by going to video.calepa, that's C-A-L-E-P-A dot C-A dot G-O-V. Under the provisions of the Administrative Procedure Act, this is the time and place set for the presentation of comments orally or in writing regarding the proposed rulemaking concerning the level of exposures to chemicals causing reproductive toxicity. This is a regulation proposed for adoption by the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. Oeha considers this proceeding to be a quasi-legislative hearing because it is carrying out a rulemaking function delegated to it by statute. Oeha will take under submission all written comments and oral statements submitted or made during this hearing. The Director of Oeha has designated me to conduct this hearing on her behalf, and I will be doing so in accordance with provisions of the Administrative Procedure Act. A certified court reporter is here and will be making a transcript of this hearing. The transcript and all exhibits and evidence presented at this hearing will be included in the administrative record for this rulemaking. The written public comment period for the proposed rulemaking will close on December 3, 2018. So, for organizational purposes, we ask that those of you wishing to speak at this hearing complete a blue speaker's card. They are on the table at the back of the room. You can give it to Monet, who is in the back of the room waving them now, though you're not required to do so in order to speak. Also, I want to be sure you are aware that because this is a formal public hearing, we will essentially be in listening mode. That means we may be able to answer procedural questions if you have any, or we may ask very simple clarifying questions of commenters. But under state procedures, formal public hearings are not really set up for the kind of back-and-forth discussions that you may have seen at either meetings of our expert scientific panels or at pre-regulatory workshops. So, we are here to listen. We're not anticipating the need to enforce a five-minute limit for each speaker today. We can be flexible, but we do ask that you keep your spoken comments to a reasonable length. And if you have a long or complex argument, we definitely encourage you to submit those in writing to us by the December 3 deadline. Submitting lengthy comments in writing ensures that we'll take as much time as we need to review them and think about them and give them full consideration. If we adopt a final regulation concerning the level of exposures to chemicals causing reproductive toxicity, we will have written responses to comments that we receive at today's hearing as well as the written comments that we received during the public comment period. So, to enable the audience, particularly on our webcast, to hear you and to ensure that your comments are recorded for the record, when it's your turn to speak, you can come to the front of the room. Gwen Osborne of our staff has a microphone for you to use, and it would be helpful to us and to the court reporter if you state your name and the organization that you represent, if any. However, you're not required to do so in order to speak. So, at this time, Carol Monahan Cummings, our Chief Counsel, will present Oeha's exhibit.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. In order to save the time required to read into the record each provision of the proposed amendments, I have already presented to the court reporter a copy of the text of the proposed amendments, together with the public notice and the initial statement of reasons in order to have them included in the hearing record. As required by the Administrative Procedure Act, the public and interested parties were notified of these proposed amendments 45 days prior to today's hearing. The notice of this proposed regulation was published in the California Regulatory Notice Register and on Oeha's website and sent by email to interested groups and individuals. That was done on October 5. There's also been two extensions of the public comment period, and so the comment period currently closes now on December 3. So, if the court reporter could please mark our exhibit as Oeha Exhibit A. Thank you. So, now I'm going to turn over to Martha to give an overview of the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Carol. Good morning. So, we'll be talking about the proposed amendments to Sections 25, 8, 21, A, and C. I'll give you some background on those sections of the regulations. They were adopted nearly 30 years ago, and courts over the years have had some difficulty interpreting the regulations, and Oeha has identified a need for some clarity and consistency in their implementation. So, Proposition 65 requires businesses to provide a warning for exposures to a listed chemical unless the level of exposure is below a specified amount, and for reproductive toxicants, that is, one one-thousandth of the no observable effect level. The level of exposure to a listed chemical is determined by multiplying the level in question, and that's the concentration of a chemical in a given medium, times the reasonably anticipated rate of exposure for an individual to a given medium. And for exposures to consumer products, the level of exposure is calculated using the reasonably anticipated rate of intake or exposure for average users of the product. The areas that have been identified for clarification are as follows. Section 25, 8, 21, A and the statute do not specify procedures for determining the level in question. So, that's part of the proposed amendment. And the second area, Section 25, 8, 21, C2, and the statute are not specific about how the intake or exposure of an average consumer is determined. So, we're clarifying that. So, on the slide here, you see the proposed amendments to Section 25, 8, 21, A. The proposed additional language to this section is shown here in underline, and I'll read that additional language for you now. For purposes of this section, where a business presents evidence for the level in question of a listed chemical in a food product based on the average of multiple samples of that food, the level in question may not be calculated by averaging the concentration of the chemical in food products from different manufacturers or producers, or that were manufactured in different manufacturing facilities from the product at issue. The proposed amendments to Section 25, 8, 21, C2 are shown here on this slide, and we're proposing to add the sentence that's in underline mode on the slide, and I'll read that to you now. This rate of intake or exposure is calculated as the arithmetic mean of the rate of intake or exposure for users of the product. So, now to talk about the proposed amendment to 25, 8, 21, A. This section provides specific parameters for measuring the concentration of a listed reproductive toxicant in a food product. Where a business can show that averaging the concentration of a chemical in a given food product is appropriate, the level in question may not be calculated by averaging the concentration of the chemical in food products from different manufacturers or producers, and it may not be calculated by averaging the concentration of the chemical in food products that were manufactured in different manufacturing facilities from the product at issue. This proposed amendment will help to ensure that the level in question is representative of the food products an individual would typically be exposed to when purchasing and consuming a product in California. And the proposed amendment to 25, 8, 21, C2 identifies the arithmetic mean of measured intake rates or exposures as the average value of intake or exposure for users of a consumer product. The arithmetic mean takes into account the magnitudes of all measured values, weighting all values equally. It does not discount exposures near the high end of the range, and it is an estimate of the expected or average magnitude of intake or exposure. This proposed amendment will help to ensure that the average value of intake or exposure for users of a consumer product is based on the full range of exposures experienced by Californians. Thank you.
We usually ask for, like, if anyone has any simple clarifying questions or... If anyone has any simple clarifying questions, this would be a time to ask. Otherwise, we'll go right to the public comments. Okay, well, seeing that, it's clear. Okay, so now with the public comments, again, I have actually one blue card. If you wish to speak, we have blue cards at the back of the room. If you'd rather not fill one out, that's fine. I will ask for anyone else who wants to speak after everyone filling out a blue card has spoken. So, the first speaker, Adam Regley, Cal Chamber. Did I get that right?
No, that's okay.
Regley, okay.
No one ever gets it right.
Three strikes, I'm out, because I know I've gotten it wrong in the past. I know you have... I guess you're making comments on behalf of several...
I'll be there if you ask today.
Okay.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Adam Regley. I'm here on behalf of the California Chamber of Commerce in opposition to the proposed regulatory changes. To begin, the chamber objects to the initial statement of reasons stating that these amendments, quote, "clarify how a business should calculate exposures to listed reproductive toxicants and do so without any significant economic impact on private persons or businesses." Quite to the contrary, these proposed regulatory changes will muddle how businesses calculate exposures, will have significant economic impacts on the entire regulated community, and will exacerbate the overwarning problem under Prop 65. Specifically, the proposed change to Section 25, 8, 21, subsection C2, which inserts the reference to the arithmetic mean, is both confusing and unnecessary. Based on a meeting with Oeha staff, the chamber understands that it is not Oeha's intent to mandate the use of the arithmetic mean if it is scientifically more appropriate to use another statistical methodology, such as the geometric mean. However, contrary to Oeha's stated intent, the initial statement of reasons states, quote, "This proposed amendment identifies the arithmetic mean of measured intake rates or exposures as the method for identifying an average value regardless of the shape of the distribution that best describes the sampling data." We therefore request that Oeha reconcile these diametrically opposed intents by reiterating on the record what it conveyed to the chamber, that it is not Oeha's intent to mandate the arithmetic mean if using the geometric mean or other statistical methodology is scientifically more appropriate. If it is indeed not Oeha's intent to mandate the use of the arithmetic mean regardless of the shape of the distribution and regardless of whether there is more appropriate scientific methodology to calculate the average, then we find this proposal is entirely unnecessary. Courts already implement existing regulations by reviewing the science, reviewing the specific distribution for the chemical at issue and for the product at issue, and assess whether substantial evidence supports the statistical method used by the business to calculate the reasonably anticipated rate of intake or exposure for the average user of that consumer product. Courts have been doing this for over three decades, with the burden of proof already laid at the business's feet. The initial statement of reason also incorrectly states that, quote, "The geometric mean is not typically used for identifying average consumption or usage levels of a food or consumer product." There's no reference in the initial statement to any supporting documentation, and in fact, the proposed regulation is in direct contradiction to the guidance provided by the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, which is the agency responsible for the database on food consumption specifically referenced in the Prop 65 regulations. Quoting directly from the CDC guidelines, it states, "In instances where the data are highly skewed, geometric means should be used." It is simply bad policy for Oeha to require a one-size-fits-all statistical methodology. Any estimate of an average is only as good as the data and methods that are used for the estimate. A geometric mean, unlike the arithmetic mean, minimizes the effect of very high or very low values, which could bias the mean if the straight average or arithmetic mean were calculated. In many cases, the arithmetic mean of exposure is at the 80th or 85th percentile of the entire distribution. For skewed distributions, which Oeha acknowledges is true for most foods and is also true for other consumer products, using the arithmetic mean of exposure would have the practical effect of requiring a warning where only 15% of the users are exposed above the threshold levels. It is for that reason that the U.S. EPA calls for the geometric mean when dealing with skewed data distributions for exposure assessments. The chamber pointed out the CDC guidance to Oeha in our November 2015 comments on this exact pre-regulatory proposal when it was first raised, but to date, Oeha has never addressed this key point, including in its most recent initial statement of reasons. In sum, Oeha should issue a new initial statement of reasons that either clarifies that it is not Oeha's intent to mandate the arithmetic mean if using the geometric mean or other statistical methodology is scientifically more appropriate, or explain why it is reasonable to disregard the CDC guidance and best science, and then allow the public to engage Oeha in a substantive dialogue on that point. Lastly, with regard to the proposed change to Section 25, 8, 21, subsection A, the chamber is also strongly opposed. Limiting average to a single food producer or manufacturing facility could well eliminate averaging altogether and force warnings on many more foods because of the cost and litigation considerations. The proposal fails to account for how food is manufactured and distributed throughout California's marketplace and will lead to additional and unnecessary warnings or inconsistent warnings on the same product made by the same manufacturer, often found on the same exact shelf. For these reasons, Cal Chamber strongly opposes both of the proposed amendments. And so, I'm going to switch hats here and present the Grocery Manufacturers Association's talking points that couldn't be here today. Oeha's proposal on cross-facility averaging solves no actual problem that the agency can identify, yet it will impact manufacturers and agricultural growers through increased production costs, testing costs, and litigation risk. Oeha is proposing to prohibit averaging of concentration data across facilities that make the same exact product, but Oeha has not identified any actual problem to be solved by drawing this arbitrary line at the facility level. In general, facility equipment is not one of those factors that can affect chemical concentration levels because facilities must meet GMP and H双A CP standards. Variability from food ingredients cannot be a justification for this proposal either. There is variability of substances and food ingredients used to make these products even when a product is made at the exact same facility. To evaluate average exposure levels, concentration data, just like consumption data, must reflect what is typical of that product. Courts are fully capable of addressing representative sampling methods on a case-by-case basis where they can consider any and all relevant factors that affect how and whether to average across facilities under the facts of that case. And again, the burden lies with the business to demonstrate that. Oeha is wrong to argue that the Beech Nut case reached an incorrect decision on the averaging concentration results. The court did not evaluate the concentration data because the party stipulated to that admission of the data. Moreover, Oeha's proposal raises many problems, and we'd like to present three of those examples. First example, a company that makes the same product at different facilities will now need to do additional testing to establish facility-specific concentration data. That will inevitably raise costs. Second, to ensure a consistent concentration level at the facility level, certain ingredients may need to be transported to other, more distant facilities, which increases transportation costs and has its own environmental impacts. Third, a manufacturer may need to consolidate the agricultural suppliers they use, which will also then have an impact on upstream grower communities. In sum, GMA believes that Oeha should not adopt this costly proposal. And finally, my last hat is with the... I'll be speaking on behalf of the California League of Food Producers, and this is their comments. Preventing the ability to average concentration of a listed chemical in a food product across different manufacturers and across different manufacturing facilities is simply unworkable and cost-prohibited for the food manufacturers. The food processing industry is extremely dynamic and requires flexibility to move raw agricultural products and ingredients among different processing facilities. For my members, and this is again for the California League of Producers, who process fresh fruits and vegetables, whether they are canned, dried, or frozen, they often have multiple facilities that process agricultural products from the same grower and in many instances, the same field or orchard. Let's take, for example, canned peaches and assume that the processor is a private-label company in order to illustrate the complexity of the marketplace. On a peach orchard, they can be contracted to a processor, but the peaches are then split among multiple processing plants. Under the proposed regulation, each facility would have to test their final product and then determine if a warning is needed at that facility despite the fact that the raw produce came from the exact same source. First, testing at each facility would be extremely expensive. Second, the logistics of providing a facility-specific Prop 65 warning is daunting. Consider that once a can of peaches is processed, it is sent to a central location for labeling. Cans are not labeled by facility. They are all combined and labeled for different customers, and several facilities are often needed to fill a customer order that meets the quality specifications. So, for example, if Facility A has an outlier and needs to provide a label and Facility B and C do not, it would be a logistical nightmare for the food processors to separate out the cans that require Prop 65 warning from those that do not. If the processor is theoretically able to separate out the cans that would require Prop 65 warning, that would mean the processor would have to establish two lines in the central labeling facility, one for the Prop 65 warnings and one without, which would be expensive and logistically challenging and confusing to consumers where a product would have potentially one with a Prop 65 warning label next to the exact same product without the warning label. Accordingly, this would necessitate a stock of labels with Prop 65 warnings just in case for every type of product produced by that manufacturer, which in some cases, which is over 2,500 different labels. This could mean that one private-label brand, say, Great Value, may have one, as I mentioned, may have one can of peaches sitting on the shelf with a Prop 65 warning next to another Great Value product without the Prop 65 warning, therefore overwarning and confusing the consumer for the exact same product. For all the reasons stated, we oppose the regulations. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, that was the one blue card that we have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And the answer is yes.
Hi, Alan. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Anne Graffbait, on behalf of Consorries and Conway and the California Rice Commission. The Rice Commission would like to submit some comments regarding 25, 8, 21A this morning. On behalf of the state's 2,500 rice farmers and 40 markets of rice, we'd like to say that in the first proposal, the use of the term "producer" when referring to average concentrations of a chemical in a food is inappropriate, misleading, and not applicable when considering a level of exposure to a manufactured food product. The term "producer" should be eliminated, or at a minimum appropriately defined, to ensure that raw agricultural products and the growers who produce these products are not going to be included as outlined within the scope of this regulation. To begin, we find that the use of the term "producer" itself is confusing. The California Food and Agricultural Code will generally define the term "producer" to mean any person that is engaged in the business of growing or producing any commodity for commercial use. The commission itself specifically defines "producer" to mean any person who produces or causes to be produced rice. In addition, we represent several other agricultural commodities who also similarly define themselves as producers in this fashion. Finally, within agriculture itself, the term is uniformly understood to mean the grower of a raw agricultural product, whether it be a grain, fruit, vegetable, animal, or dairy. A producer is never construed to be the manufacturer of a consumer product, which appears to be the focus of your proposed regulatory change. Also, due to the widespread practice of co-mingling or mixing of raw agricultural products between the farm and the final consumer package, production at the grower level should not be included when considering a level of exposure at the manufacturing level. Previously, the Rice Commission had submitted comments in November 2015 on your prior pre-regulatory proposal, and as noted at that point, rice from one farm is mixed with rice from many farms during the drying and storage process. It's further mixed at the mill when shipments from several storage facilities are received to process a customer order. These practices are nearly universal within the production and movement of raw agricultural products. Accordingly, it would be impossible to accurately address any level of a Prop 65 chemical within a raw agricultural commodity without some element of averaging of a product from different producers. At a minimum, we actually think that you should just eliminate the term "producer" from this regulation. In theory, you could potentially define it in some way, but given that you're already using the term "manufacturing" within the regulation, we think that's inherently going to be very confusing. And again, I think there should be some consultation with the Department of Food and Ag on that, as it is used replete throughout their code to mean a farmer and grower. With respect to the other parts of the regulation, the commission does disagree with the premise that the calculation of an exposure should be exclusively by use of the arithmetic mean. We have previously submitted comments on this in 2015. We would generally agree with the chamber's comments, but we will be submitting additional comments by the comment period. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Anne. Anyone else? This is the time to speak. Okay. Well, hearing none, I'll just remind you that if you have written comments today that you would like to submit, you can. But hearing no additional requests, I hereby close this hearing, and the office will accept written public comments until 5:00 p.m. on December 3, 2018. If you want to submit written comments, we encourage you to either submit them electronically through our website at HTTPS, Oeha, O E H H A dot C A dot G O V slash comments, or via email to P65public dot comments at Oeha dot C A dot G O V, rather than in paper form. But if you would like to snail mail us comments, you can send them to monadevila@oeha, P O Box 4010, Sacramento, California, 95812, and that information is on our website. Or lastly, you could also fax them to 916-323-2610. So again, we encourage you to get that information off of our website to make sure the comments go to the right place. Okay, thank you very much.